... and necessary expenditures, whereas it is also recognized that these changes, as per attached and reviewed by the Finance Committee, result in a zero-dollar impact. And whereas all transactions have been conducted with full knowledge and reporting to the Finance Committee and/or Common Council, it is hereby resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis authorizes the City Clerk Treasurer to make the budget changes and use both undesignated and core funds designated for retirement to fund said changes. I'd like to make that a motion.
Motion by Ms. Trove, second by Mr. Bovozzo. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carry. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a tax anticipation note resolution. Whereas the City of Port Jervis acts as an agent for tax collection on behalf of Orange County, and whereas the outstanding amounts for the 2016 tax collection period is $69,548.72 as of September 30th, 2016, and whereas Orange County is desirous of full payment and will reimburse the amount of borrowing done on their behalf through the 2017 tax collection process. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis approve the issuance of a tax anticipation note to be issued on or about October 31st, 2016, with a maturity date of January 31st, 2017, with rates resulting from a competitive bidding process for the purpose of funding tax payment to Orange County. I'd like to make that a motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Trove, second by Mr. Belcher, in regards to the resolution tax anticipation note. Discussion? Opposed? Or all in favor? I'm sorry. Opposed? So carry.
Thank you. We also discussed the 2017 budget. We have not seen the mayor's proposed budget yet. We'll be getting that tonight, but we do anticipate that the proposed tax increase will be high and need to have budget workshops, especially considering our attempts to reduce expenditures by offering an employee retirement incentive was accepted by one person, and our idea of switching to a more affordable healthcare provider was not accepted. So we have tentative budget workshop dates for the following days: October 27th, November 1st, November 3rd, and November 16th. These are going to be held here at the council chambers at 6:00 P.M. Details as to the departments to discuss on those dates will be shared once received. And speaking of expenditures, we have bills to pay. From the General Fund, $348,171.59. From the Water Fund, $55,466.78. And the Capital Fund, $145,797.55. For a total of $549,435.92. Some of the higher bills from the General and Water Funds. New York State Employees Health Insurance, October Coverage, $187,929.96. Direct Energy, September Usage, $6,717.28. Orange and Rockland, September Utilities, $23,804.6. From the Capital Fund, Kloharbor and Associates Engineering Services, $127,267.53. And Jam Associates for the Fire Department Roof, $9,115. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion by Ms. Trove, second by Mr. Bovozzo, to pay the bills. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carry. Thank you.
And the next finance meeting is on November 16th at 6:45 P.M., which will be after a budget hearing workshop if we have one that day. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question. Did we set November 30th as a tentative date as well for a workshop in case we needed? No, we didn't. Okay.
I thought we did too, but then it's on email that it wasn't on there.
Thank you.
Fire Emergency Management, Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no Secretary of Communications, which will shorten this whole thing. The Fire Department will be patrolling the streets on Halloween once again. If you need help or you see something unusual, just stop under the fire vehicles and report whatever you see. The next meeting of the Fire Emergency Management meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 21st at 7:00 P.M. here in the council chambers. And watch our Facebook page, Port Jervis Fire Department, and our webpage, PJNYFD, for more information about the Port Jervis Fire Department. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Code and Legislative, Mr. Bovozzo.
Thank you, Mayor. The Code Committee has not met since our last meeting. Our next Code Committee meeting will be next Wednesday, November 2nd, at 7:00 o'clock here in the council chambers. At the last Common Council meeting, I had circulated a proposed application regarding the purchase of city-owned properties, particularly residences. I had asked the council to review it, to potentially discuss this evening. We had gotten some email responses about it, but I wanted to bring it to the council this evening as there were some people that did not weigh in on it. For those who don't know, this had initially started as the potential for a local law within the city as far as a procedure for selling residences that are currently owned by the City of Port Jervis and are off the tax rules. What we are seeking to do, well, eventually through a great deal of discussion, it was decided to abandon the local law and to potentially adopt a resolution for the council, or by the council, I'm sorry, to set in place a procedure. Doing it by resolution also creates an easier way to amend it in the future if needed, as you don't have to go through the local law process. The program as initially conceived and put together in this application proposes that anyone looking to purchase one of those properties from the city would have to submit a bid showing their financial ability to do so. They would have to be willing to accept that it would have to be a single-family owner-occupied residence, and would have to bring the property up to code within one year of the closing date, or else the property would revert back to the City of Port Jervis. That bringing it up to code could have happened in one of two ways, either fixing up the property or demolishing the property and constructing a new single-family residence that would be up to code. Before I open it to the rest of the council, I do want to say I am in favor of setting up a program like this. I think homeownership in this city is something that's important. I think when you have an ownership interest in something, you inherently have a certain amount of pride in that property and a desire to take care of it, which is what we're seeking. There's been concern that certain uses would come about if we simply sold the properties to the highest bidders without requiring a owner-occupied residential status. So again, this resolution was put into place in regard to that. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to any comments from the council as they may have them.
As I said today, the only thing that I would do, there were some concerns. I know that there was a lot of history behind this because we've been working on it for at least a year, if not more. I did look at my computer, so you will be forwarded any information about the concerns about deed restrictions and things like that. That was researched by Corporation Counsel, and then the specific questions that need to be asked to NICOM and anybody that we can get that's proficient in that area.
Homeownership is part of the American dream, and many of us were dreaming years ago, maybe are dreaming now, of owning a home. And the burden that these homes put on the taxpayers can be alleviated by allowing the American dream to be continued. We just spent three days in a community where my son lives, and they're all residential homeowner properties, and it's a different feeling when you walk down the street there than when you walk down some of our streets. I think that if we can get these properties into hands of people that want to live, work, and play here, I think the city would benefit from that, and I'm in favor of that.
I'd just like to add that homeownership is great, but it is not necessarily for everyone. And to say that people who don't own homes don't have pride in where they live is a little upsetting because I know many renters that are very proud to be in Port Jervis, and they live here, they play here, they work here. And one of the concerns with this is that it is requiring people to live here for a certain amount of time, it is excluding certain people from purchasing homes, and all I ask was that we table it and we discuss some things with our legal counsel, with our fair housing officer, just to make sure that anything that we are doing does not discriminate against any person.
I would have to agree with Mrs. Trove on that. I definitely agree that there is, you know, homeownership is great, and I think that we should encourage that, but I don't think that it should be necessarily put down in any kind of a policy that we would only sell to owners, because I would be concerned that that would leave out and be the city picking winners and losers in this situation. I think that there are a lot of questions that need to be asked. I don't think that this is something that we should rush into. I think that there is a lot more discussion. I also think that the council should know for those people who do not attend Finance or do not attend Code meetings, that other opportunities or other suggestions were presented, namely which Mrs. Trove did bring up earlier in the minutes for Finance, was the possibility of having a broker list these properties and having it open to everyone. I'm not sure, you know, if that's something that we should all discuss together as a council, or if we should, you know, encourage everybody to come to the Finance or the Code Committee meetings, but a lot of these discussions do happen, and then not all of that information is necessarily brought towards everybody. So my feeling on this is to make sure that everything is done legally, properly, and without any discrimination against anybody. That's it.
That being said, obviously with questions still for Corporation Counsel, we are going to table this, so that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Belcher.
Thank you, Mayor. Garbage and recycling will be on the normal schedule for the next two weeks. The paper pickup scheduled for the second ward for November 11th will take place on Monday, November 14th due to the Veterans Day holiday. Bag leaves and tied-up brush will start being picked up citywide on Monday, November 7th, and will continue on Monday until the season is complete. The city brush and compost pit, along with the bulk waste truck, will be open every Saturday morning from 7:15 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. The bulk waste truck will be available to city residents only, and the purchase coupon is needed to dump in the truck. Coupons are available for purchase at the City Clerk's office here in City Hall for $10 each. Please be advised that the City Council has issued a voluntary water restriction to all city residents to refrain from any outside water use due to the severe drought we are experiencing. Please also try and limit the use of water inside your house by taking shorter showers and fixing any leaking water fixtures. Next DPW meeting will take place on Monday, November 7th at 6:00 P.M. here in the council chambers. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Police Committee, Mr. Foster.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Police Committee met on October 18th. Some of the things that were discussed, the senior citizen safety presentations were conducted, the Port Jervis Senior Club, Waters Edge, and Hillside Terrace. There was a presentation conducted to SUNY Orange Criminal Justice students pertaining to policing. There's a police recruitment conducted for an exam scheduled for next month at various local colleges, military installations, veterans organizations, Department of Labor, community groups, Mount St. Mary's College. Also, Police Department took into, or I should say attended, Rachel's Challenge, Chain Reaction Day, also Operation PJ Pride staring and quality of life meeting. Also, the Port Jervis Middle School Health Class Police Officer Meet-Greet and Career Talk took place. Attended the Fall Fowlage Festival, Domestic Violence Awareness Month took place also using or involved in the Clothesline Project, O.C.C.Tech Criminal Justice Club meeting. October 31st, there will be a Policy and Prevention Summit on Substance Abuse. Upcoming events, Halloween, Safety. Today was the Chaperone Food Day with the Big Apple Crunch, Red Ribbon Week, Too Good for Drugs program will be coming up, Halloween Safety Enhanced Patrols, Mischief Night and Halloween Night. November 30th, there will be Citywide Neighborhood Watch meeting on the topic of protecting the homeland. Developing a topic for February for 2017 that will entail safe buildings, homes, and Police Department will be participating in the High School Career Fair that will be happening on November 2nd. And also, there will be a Program on Deadly Force Encounters presentation with the Orange County DA's Office and Police Chiefs Association coming up on November 29th and on December 1st at 6:30, respectfully at the Police Academy in New Windsor. The Committee discussed developing a protocol for reviewing requests for signage. The chief will draft a potential protocol and review with the Committee and DPW in a future meeting. Discussion pertaining to the intersection located at King Street and Lumber Street, the potential of installing a red light flashing signal. There was also a speed study that was conducted on Lumber Street. Chief updated Committee of the Exterior Decaling Condition of the Tahoe, the need to replace and update decals in the near future. Department awarded funding from Stop DWI or DWI Enforcement Activities from October to New Year's, and funding from the Department of Justice for Body Armor Partial Reimbursements. The Committee discussed the future need to replace the current juvenile egg bureau child identification equipment. Further research on these products will be conducted with a potential 2017 capital note request. We discussed budget updates. There'll be a training coming up, mandatory firearms and use of force, Taser training. Postponed defensive tactics will be held next year. There were four employees that have completed the New York State Lockup Attendant Training 24 hours. Two of our officers instructed, and will present the course in-house to two remaining employees. There was also in training, we online training topics, shift training and training bulletins being prepared for remaining portions of the fall. And we entered into executive session and come out. Also, just to give you some of the highlights from the September Police Report, total incidents for the month was 1,043. Total traffic stops was 109 for this month. Total auto accidents for the month was 36. Value of stolen property was 2,741. Value of recovered property was $1,461. Total domestics for the month was 29. Prisoners detained locally was 46. Total animal control complaints was 29, and the total arrests for this month was 147. Our next meeting will be on November 15th, 6:00 P.M. in the mayor's conference room. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Underlies on CDA, Ms. Trove and Mr. Belcher. Ms. Trove?
Thank you. The CDA has not met since our last council meeting. The next scheduled meeting is for this Wednesday, October 26th at 7:00 P.M. on the second floor of the Youth Center. And just a reminder that the First Time Homebuyers Workshop is scheduled for tomorrow, October 25th at 6:00 P.M. on the second floor of the Youth Center. That's hosted by the CDA and presented by Pathstone. Thank you.
Thank you. IDA, Ms. Randazzo.
Last IDA meeting was on October 19th. I'm going to have to defer to Ms. Lozanega if I could, because I was unable to attend that meeting, but the next meeting will be held on December 21st at 6:00 P.M. here in the council chambers.
Thank you.
Yes, we did request that Representative 100 Pike Plaza be present at the IDA meeting. They attended via telephone, via telephone conference to attempt to give us a report on what is happening at the Pike Plaza. They claim that they will be continuing interior work and that the parking lot work will happen in the spring at this point, not now. The IDA Board did express to the owner of 3312 Group or 100 Pike Plaza that they were upset by this news, that they didn't feel that he would move in fast enough. He continued to reiterate that, you know, it's been a more difficult challenge at that building than they thought, and having expended millions of dollars already. He certainly wanted the IDA to understand that he is not backing away from the project, and he did consent to supply the IDA with an update via email every two weeks on the project until it is completed to the IDA's satisfaction. Just because the IDA statewide have come under compliance reviews quite heavily, and so the IDA is concerned that they are meeting the guidelines of their application and the pilot and the sales action that was granted to them.
Okay. Thank you. ADA, Mr. Foster. ADA meeting has not met since our last meeting, but we are scheduled to meet on December 8th at 6:30 in the council chambers. Thank you. Mr. Segal.
Thank you. Housing Authority?
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no. Wouldn't you? Housing Authority.
I can speak about anything you'd like. Housing Authority last met on September 27th. The next meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 P.M. Hillside Terrace. And Linda, I know you're watching. I'll try to make it on time, but we have to 6:00 o'clock meeting.
Stan?
Are you going with us to the Orange County town dance?
Oh, Linda, I'm sorry. I will not be there. I'm going to the 4:30 meeting, out of town. Send you an email.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Recreation Commission, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The first annual Little Orange Trail Run was held this past Saturday, October 22nd, at the New Trails in a Watershed Park and Elks Bronx Park. Despite the cold and rainy morning, all the participants had a great time and loved the trails. Looking forward to next year's run. Special thanks to Debbie Casara and the Port Jervis High School Honor Society students for volunteering an entire morning. They were a huge help. This Saturday, October 29th, is the Erie 80 Mountain Bike Race, also at the Watershed Park and Elks Bronx Park Trails. We have codes of 70 pre-registered, so we hope to hit 100 by race day. If you are interested in participating, register at www.bikereg.com/erie-80. If you are interested in volunteering, please contact the Recreation Office at 845-858-4045. Hope to see you Saturday. Also, the 70th Annual Halloween Parade is this Sunday, October 30th. Lineup will be at 3:00 P.M. in front of City Hall on Hammond Street. The parade will start at 3:30 P.M. and finish at Farnum Park, where cider and donuts will be served. Children also have a chance to win prizes for their costumes at Farnum Park. Parade is for children, adults, and even pets. Dress festive, and we will see you Sunday. Also, the Youth Center will be open 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 P.M. on Monday, October 31st on Halloween, Tuesday, November 8th, Election Day, and Friday, November 11th, Veterans Day. Regular Youth Center hours are Monday through Thursday, 3:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M., and Friday, 3:00 P.M. to 6:00 P.M. Our tea night is Friday nights at 6:00 P.M. through to 10:00 P.M. Also, the next Recreation Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 16th at 7:00 at the Youth Center. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Tourism, Mr. Belcher.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the winners of the Halloween lighting contest. The first place in the traditional went to Herman and Cindy Zubi. Second place went to Courtney Fuller. And the third place went to Betty Rupp. The scary category, the first place went to Todd Kowinski. The prizes will be nailed up to the winners by the end of this week. Congratulations to all the winners. We would like permission to hold the Kris-Kendall Mark on November 27th from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 P.M. We would like to close Jersey Avenue from Fowler Street to Front and Front Street from Fowler to Sussex. I hereby make a motion for the council to provide this permission.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Bovozzo, to allow 11/27, November 27th, as Kris-Kendall Mark in closing all stated streets. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carry.
With your permission, we'll have DPW hang the banners, there's three of them, on November 1st. I make a motion that we allow that.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Bovozzo, to hang the banners by November 1st. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carry.
We also need permission to close the municipal parking lot next to H&R Block from Friday evening, November 25th, until Monday morning, November 28th, to set up the vendor tent. I make a motion for the council to allow this.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Bovozzo, to close the municipal lot as done in the past for those three days, four days. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carry.
Yeah, the reason is they'll put the tent up Saturday morning, and then the tent won't come down until Monday morning. I make a motion for the council to allow the Police Department's cooperation in moving the cars out of the parking lot Friday night, and the DPW to provide Block 8 to block the parking lot Friday night, so that we could set the tent up Saturday morning.
Okay. I have a motion for the Police Department to work on clearing the lot. Motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Bovozzo. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carry.
We're going to have a horse-drawn carrie's ride from Front Street to Sussex Street to Ball Street to Fowler Street to Front Street. Police Chief doesn't think it would require closing the streets because it's going to be during daylight hours, so we're not going to close those streets. Drivers using the streets during the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 P.M., I ask that you please drive carefully. I also request that the mayor get permission from the owner of 100 Pike Street to mobilize the Santa Express in the parking lot prior to their participation.
Yeah, he's giving me a blanket okay for that.
It's okay.
Yep.
Okay. An agreement has been prepared by our Corporation Council between the City and the New York State Rifle and Pistol Association to hold an Outdoor Sports Events Fair and Exhibition at Riverside Park on May 20th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. till 6:00 P.M. The Association will pay the expense of DPW worker, police officers, and an electrician. The City will seek three or four local food vendors from clubs or organizations. The event will focus on hunting, fishing, firearms, biking, biking, rafting, and other outdoor events and activities. The Association shall obtain all insurance required by the City, including general liability and property damage insurance and workman's compensation insurance. The City shall be named as an additional insured in these policies. We need the permission of the council to hold this event and also to use Riverside Park for the event. I hereby make a motion for the council to provide provision... I hereby make a motion for the council to provide provision, permission for both.
I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Bovozzo. Under discussion, we have sent the contract to Mr. King, who was here before he.